All right, it's one thirty-eight PM on Thursday, July the thirtieth, and Commissioners Court is now in session. We started this meeting yesterday on July the twenty-ninth at one thirty PM and then we went into recess at one fifty. We were on line item number four, discussion in action to set proposed budget and tax rate for the year 2016, and setting a public hearing regarding same. A motion was made by Commissioner Cooper to set the tax rate at the effective tax rate, which is point five seven six two, is that correct?
Correct.
And that motion passed unanimously. Before we move much further, I'd like to call the court's attention to a printout that Laura gave me from the Texas Comptroller's website, and it does state in item number one that if your taxing unit wants to adopt a tax rate that is equal to or lower than the effective tax rate, are the two public hearings required, and it says no, that they are not. You can adopt the tax rate at a regular meeting of Commissioners Court, so we will put that on the agenda of the August the tenth regular meeting. And after that, there will be no public hearings required. It is the pleasure of the court to not have any public hearings regarding the tax rate. I'm going to take your silence as that that is the consensus of the court, that we go by the law and not have any public hearings regarding the tax rate.
Except now, when we have one the last day when we adopt the tax rate. Have a public budget hearing.
We have a, on the last day of September? Last meeting of September is when we'll set the final budget and set the tax rate.
Yeah, before the regular court session, we normally have a public hearing on the budget and on the tax rate, on that day, where the public can gather input. That's what we normally do.
We can sure do that, that's fine. Okay. So we will do that in that meeting, that date will be published at a later date. We'll set that and get it published and get the message out to everyone and the news media as well. All right, so we have the, Angela, for the auditor, had requested some more time to complete that entry into the budget. And she's done that and handed that to us right before the meeting began. And I'd like to turn things over to Angela so she can go over where we stand right now with the budget, proposed budget.
Okay. I'd like to read some of the following cuts that were made since the meeting yesterday. The sheriff office, they decreased their auto purchases by forty, by forty-five thousand.
Are you looking at the paid somewhere or that's just?
This is the email that I received from the judge yesterday.
Okay, so we don't have a copy of that?
No, would you like to copy?
Would y'all like to copy?
Can I give it to you later?
Yeah.
Do you want it now?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, the sheriff's office decreased their auto purchases by forty-five thousand. The, this is the email from Judge McDaniel stated that the auto allowances for the Constable two, Constable number five, Precinct five, Constable Precinct six, their auto allowances will decrease by one thousand two hundred dollars apiece. It will go, the total budget is fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for each one of those constables. Then then decrease the floodplain auto allowance to six thousand, decrease it by two thousand four hundred. So the total of those cuts were fifty-one thousand. And then the commissioners, they made the following additional cuts as well. Roden Bridge, they cut seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars from materials and supplies.
Is that Roden Bridge one?
One, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Roden Bridge two, cut approximately seven thousand from salaries and fringe benefits. Roden Bridge two, cut ten thousand from equipment. Roden Bridge three, cut forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars from materials and supplies and salaries. Roden Bridge four, cut seven thousand from their salaries and wages. And then we added seven thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars into our miscellaneous reimbursement, and that's for the court coordinator from Tyler County. And then we added eighty thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for the dispatchers. I had removed the revenue and the expenditures for the dispatchers, and then Judge McDaniel brought it to my attention that the county still had their portion that they had to pay. So those are the, some of the cuts and additions that were made since yesterday.
What was the total on Roden Bridge?
Seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
The figure that you gave on the court coordinator, Eighty-Eighth Court Coordinator, that's a, that's not a cut, that's a rev, that's revenue that'll come back from Tyler County, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, and I just did not update the court on that yet. I was asked in a previous budget workshop to check with the Tyler County judge to see if they would reimburse the county the part that they were paying for the Eighty-Eighth Court Coordinator. I told him the reason was is that Judge Stover had wanted to have his court coordinator paid one hundred percent by Hardin County so that the benefits all were the same. He told me that the benefits between Tyler and Hardin County are now the same since this current budget year. They pay the same retirement ratio that Hardin County does. He said, however, if we would like to do that, they would contribute that payment directly to Hardin County. I believe Mr. Pelt is the one that asked me to make that phone call. Either way, the money stays the same, just would like to have a consensus from the court if that's, we want to go ahead and go that route and have the court coordinator paid one hundred percent by Hardin County and receive the reimbursement for her portion, or their portion of her salary out of Tyler County direct to the general fund.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so that's, that's the way the budget is presented, and that's the way we'll, we'll proceed with that. The other item about dispatchers, I'd like to clarify that. There are three dispatchers that we share expenses through five other entities, and if we need to name those, I can do that. However, they don't pay a hundred percent of those dispatcher's salary. So there's a portion of that that Hardin County pays. What's the total, do you have the total for those three dispatchers? What, the total that we received from the other entities is around ninety-two thousand dollars.
The total three dispatcher salary only is a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Salary only, but their benefits and everything needed to be added. So the, the amount that we received from the other five entities, I believe the total is a little over ninety-two thousand. However, the county's still responsible for about roughly eighty, a little over eighty thousand, and eight thou, eighty thousand two hundred and twenty something dollars, I believe. So that needed to be added back in, and that, that was done, and where did that get plugged back in?
In Commissioners Court, under a county portion.
Okay.
Under what?
In Commissioners Court, like all of our other grants, our county match is in Commissioners Court, and that's where it is there.
So those are the changes that have been made since yesterday. The other changes that have been made since yesterday is, is that now all of the salaries and wages, insurance, as far as health insurance, dental and life, all of that is plugged in, and they are the correct amounts, they reflect the correct amounts going forward.
That is correct.
Now, there is one item, I believe you told me, it's, is it workers' comp? One of those, we don't have the rates yet, we don't receive it until the middle of next budget.
Unemployment and workers' comp?
Yes. So those are actually just carried over from the current fiscal year budget at the same rate. If there is an increase, we'll have to have a budget amendment to accommodate that.
And the salary adjusted adjustments that were approved is also included.
Yes. Debbie, do you know, we had asked you yesterday, the employee portion, the dependent coverage portion of the health insurance. An employee who has a, let's say, an employee that has a family covered on the health insurance, how much more out-of-pocket expense will they incur for the health insurance increase?
Okay.
Let's start with the family coverage.
Family coverage, for someone that's hired after December one, two thousand and four, is going to be one thousand three twenty-six thirty-six, it was pre, this past year, it's twelve ninety-five twelve.
Can we, can you just tell me the difference?
Oh, I'm sorry.
How much more that is?
Okay. Thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents?
Thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents? That's per month? Okay, and then can you tell me what it would, what the increase will be for a, say, an employee spouse?
It will be twenty-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
And then for employee child?
Nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you, Debbie.
What was the county increase per employee, the county portion?
For employee only, it went up nineteen dollars and sixty cents, which is two point four five percent, I believe.
Yeah, that's what Angela told us, it was around twenty dollars, so.
Nineteen dollars and sixty cents.
Per employee, times two, eighty-nine, or you break it down on what, what coverage they had?
Break it down by what coverage they have.
So.
Well.
We, uh, the county.
The cost of the county would be just the employee only. So it'd be nineteen sixty per month, times two, eighty-nine. Well, no, because some of those are part-time people, so. How many full-time do we have?
Hundred eighty-four.
One eighty-four, and then of those, how many are on the health insurance?
Uh, I don't have the exact figure.
So that's, that's the number you'd use, is how many, how many is on the health insurance? Is how many, you multiply by the nineteen sixty, then times twelve. But it should be the.
That's how I calculated the increase.
Forty-four thousand and something?
Yes, sir.
Forty-three thousand two seventy-six eighty.
Okay, so, all the employees, I guess that are on health insurance, we have employees that are not on our health insurance, right?
And so they're waived, right.
Okay, but I assume they probably get health insurance somewheres.
Yes.
But just the ones on our, on our health insurance, then they're going to be paying out another forty-four thousand dollars next year, right?
No, the county.
We are, they're not paying anything.
Their, their twenty dollars is not going up, the county is going up.
I'm talking about like a family stuff.
Yes, that's, yes, sir.
This is what I was trying to get at.
Yes, sir.
How much additional are our employees going to have to pay next year?
Let's, let's look it up. This, an employee who had their full family covered would pay an extra thirty-one twenty-four per month than what they're paying right now.
Okay.
And if they were just married with no children, it'd be twenty-one fifty-six.
Okay.
Or if it was, if their spouse was covered somewhere else, or they're a single person with a child, it would be nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Do we know how much that's going to total up to? Is that the forty-three thousand you've got there?
No, sir, that's how much the county's responsible for, for employee only.
That's the increase.
Well, that, that, that figure was in our stuff yesterday.
Yes, sir.
What I'm interested in, how much are the employees going to have to pick up? What's the total burden that the employees are going to be paying on new insurance, I mean, on their insurance this year?
Any, any employee that had their whole family covered, it would cost them an extra three hundred and sixty-some dollars a year?
I don't know how many units we have.
Right.
I'll have to get you that.
See, that's what I was trying to get at, was how much are the employees going to be picking up?
Yes, sir, I understand that.
And if we're picking up forty-three thousand, or then are they going to be picking up thirty thousand, or thirty-five thousand, or whatever?
You get those figures for you?
Because in effect, what that means, that's how much their salaries are going to be cut.
Yes, sir.
That's how much less salary they're going to take this year from the county.
Yes, sir.
If you was figuring it like that though, Mr. Pelt, you would want collectively, you'd want individually, wouldn't you? And that's what that number is.
Yeah, we just have to know.
Well, you, you just want to know how many people.
Yeah, okay, let, let's just take this right here.
You didn't know now how many people are, have their family covered, and how many?
I see where that is going from. Okay, let's say that you're family on our county policy. Okay, if you're paying thirty-one twenty-four, that's roughly three hundred and seventy dollars a year. That your salary has gone down.
Yes, sir.
This year.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's a pretty simple, you know, mathematical relationship. So that's how much a person working for the county, with no raise, that's how much they're going to, income they're going to have less this year.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pelt, would you like me to get those figures for you?
No, that, that's all right, I mean, it's, it's just a relationship between what they made last year, or what they made this year, and what they're going to make last, this, next year, working for the county.
Yes, sir.
And I, I do see your point and where you're going with that. But you also have to take in consistence, consideration, or we have to take in consideration. An employee only pays twenty dollars, and we pay eight hundred and something, is that correct, Debbie?
Yes, we will be paying seventy, this is new budget, you're seven nine nine seventy-six.
Seven ninety-nine, so if we take a hundred dollars off of what we do and give it to the employee, that's, we can make some savings in this budget right here, but we throwing it right on our employee, you know? I got to look at that last night.
Yeah. Well, insurance is very expensive.
Yeah.
That's like on this family here where the employee is going up. Well, if you add all these together, the employee is going up thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, we're going up forty-four. So insurance is going up eighty something thousand.
Where are we at, Judge?
Angela, would you like to go over these two worksheets, or just have us review them and ask if we, see if we have any questions?
Um, okay. Okay, um, I can read the consolidated on this sheet here. Um, the, well, the tax rate at point five seven six two, your estimated base tax revenue for all, for your general fund, jury fund, Roden Bridge, and interest in sinking is sixteen million four hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. Your estimated frozen tax loss is three hundred and five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for an estimated budget tax revenue of sixteen million one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. We estimate a ninety-nine percent collection rate. So that brings your estimated available tax revenue at fifteen million nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. Your estimated budget additional revenue is three million eight hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars for a total estimated budget revenue of nineteen million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Your two thousand fifteen sixteen proposed budget expenditures is twenty million fifty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars, and that would be a difference between the estimated revenue and the estimated expenditures for your two thousand sixteen budget is two hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars. That's what it would take from your contingency to balance your budget.
I'm, I'm kind of lost here a little bit, and I apologize for that, but it says estimated budget revenue, nineteen million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then when you, when you take that estimated expenditures.
Yes, sir.
And you've got a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars difference.
Well, I skipped that line item because that's your two thousand fourteen fifteen adopted budget expenditures was nineteen million nine hundred and forty thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. So the difference between.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the difference.
The difference between your two different fiscal years.
Okay, and where is the contingency carried in here, in the expenditures?
No, sir.
Where is it carried in this tax revenue?
Is your contingency.
It's not in here.
No, sir.
It's not in, okay.
No, sir. I'd be happy to read the second page that deals with your contingency, if you would like for me to. But your contingency is not in this, this is just dealing with revenue and expenditures.
Sure.
Would you like me to discuss the contingency?
One of the things is like, if we had a deficit last year, we'll use easy numbers, two hundred thousand, and you have a deficit this year of two hundred thousand, it's a total of four hundred thousand, if we spend it all, correct? Because you're making up for one, you're going into another and having to make up for another, correct?
Yes, sir.
Where, where is?
Go ahead.
Where is that number at in here? Because I remember you and the judge saying at the beginning, because we took three hundred thousand last year out of contingency, it has to play into our number. Now, where's that number in, in this formula at? The three hundred that we used last year?
Well, it's in your expenditures, because, you know, you, you, you had more expenditures last year than you had revenue.
Okay.
And so.
And then the offset of this increased effective tax rate is why we're only at two oh eight instead of the three from last year.
You're getting additional tax revenue, yes, sir.
And do you remember off the top of your head how many years in a row we've had greater expenditures than revenue?
I would say every year.
Yeah, so, just so that the. No, it started in two thousand and ten, I believe.
Not every year.
So twenty-ten.
About five, yeah, every year you've been on the court. But when it started, was when the Comptroller's Department changed the oil and gas appraisal formula. Up until that point, we had something like a five million dollar contingency fund, and the Comptroller's Office changed the formula that oil and gas was appraised with, and when they did, it gave a huge loss to the county. A huge boost to the oil companies, but a huge loss to the county. And before the state changed it back, we had lost about two million dollars plus in revenue. But they did change it back, but the only thing about when they changed it back, the horse was out of the barn, the wells that had been drilled in this county, based upon three D seismic, that great exploration boom that we had that helped us build this contingency fund, and that's where most of the contingency fund came from, is oil and gas. Then those wells had depleted, drilling had stopped, and there's no way to, even though they changed the formula back, it helped a little bit, but it did not make up for the loss that we had incurred.
I, I understand what you're saying about the contingency, but my understanding of, of revenue expenditures, every single year, your, your expenditures is going to be higher than your revenue. Now, I'm not talking about your contingency, but I'm talking about what you're operating on, otherwise you wouldn't have to play with the effective tax rate.
No, it, that's, that's, that's not true, because there was a period of years starting in about nineteen and ninety-nine, that we had a sixty-two cent tax rate. And we had a change on this court, we had a change of philosophy. Prior to that, the prior courts did not have a contingency fund. When I came on the court, there was no contingency fund. In fact, the budget was in deficit, and the county was using a technique of crediting income from the landfill to balance the budget, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever. When I look back at the prior budgets, the landfill had never made a profit. So you were using something that was iffy, and the sheriff was here at the time, and the jail commission was threatening to take the jail system over, right? The sheriff and the judge and I went to Austin and pleaded with them to give us more time. The Comptroller's Office was threatening the county with to buy a two million dollar insurance policy so that we could close the landfill at some future date, because our finances were in such bad shape. We made changes, we sold the landfill, we took about a million dollars and started a contingency fund. The prior court did not believe in a contingency fund, they believed that you spent every penny that you had, and that you financed the last three months of the year with tax anticipation notes, which is the only legal borrowing that the county can do outside of bonds or certificates of obligation. And you pledge those notes, they're short-term notes, and then you redeem them once your taxes start coming in. Right after we sold the landfill, Hardin County had the good fortune that we had a drilling boom start in this county. And with that drilling boom, we were getting in far more income than what our expenses were. And we built a contingency fund that, I don't know, five and a half was headed to six million dollars. We took the sixty-two cent tax rate, and we started lowering it. We built the, remodeled the old jail out of cash, right, Sheriff? We remodeled the juvenile proba, juvenile facilities out of cash. We replaced air conditioners out of cash. And we still were able to reduce the tax rate because of this oil and gas boom. But then when the legislature changed the formula, then all of a sudden, we took tremendous losses in oil and gas appraised values, and it started down. And if you go back and look, that's when the tax rate started up a little bit. Because we, we were funding our budget with a combination of raising the tax rate a little bit and out of the contingency fund. And we continued to draw the contingency fund down. And the thinking of the court at that time was, we're giving back to the public what the oil companies have given us, rather than raising taxes to the complete amount that it would take them to finance the budget. We're just giving back.
Did anybody thank y'all for that?
No.
Okay.
I wish I would have left it at sixty-two, or sixty-one.
Well, I, I don't think you could do that, because you had been accumulating far excess cash, and I don't think the public would stand for that.
Well, you would fall into the rollback as well, I imagine.
Yeah, you, you know, all these things figure in.
Do you, do you have any knowledge of, other than our outside audit? We, in Roden Bridge, we have what we call a carryover. Do you have any knowledge, the last, since you've been in your position, how much money has actually been returned to contingency out of current budgets that a department not used?
No, sir, I mean, I can research it for you.
Do you think there is any?
Well, I can tell you pretty quick, it's going to be close to zero. I mean, you don't have to spend a lot of time, because it's going to be close to zero. Because the only departments that I know of, I don't know of any departments that's, that's turned money back. The only ones that's carried forward is Roden Bridge, and that was for the purpose so that we could do our asphalting. And we started this basically when we started losing oil and gas revenue so that we could help fund the last three months of the year if we needed to, and still keep a decent contingency. And that's what the contingency, the contingency was started in on this court for one purpose, and that was to be able to fund this government for three months. Then we had Hurricane Rita come along, and that gave you a different perspective on what a contingency could be used for. Had it not been for the contingency, at that time, thankfully, we had about five million dollars, because even though FEMA eventually came in and paid a hundred percent of all this cleanup around here, we had to pay our bills on a thirty-day, you know, people like Ashburn and them that came in and whipped out forty-something, I don't know, fifteen million dollars on cleanup around here. They weren't willing to carry us for six months. Their contingency had a different purpose after then. And, but the contingency was always, our goal was to have it to match three months of income of this county, three months of needs. But with oil and gas, it was growing so fast that we had way more than we needed, so we started lowering the tax rate, giving back to the public.
Well, thank you for that.
And that's the, that's the history of how we got into it.
Any more questions? Does anybody have any questions about the other sheet that we got from Angela regarding the contingency?
I, I only have one question, though. Angela, with, with the budget cuts that we've made.
Yes, sir.
You know, we've gone through many, many sessions here. With the cuts that we've made, and then what we made in the last few days, then we are still two hundred and eight thousand dollars in balance in this budget, that's right?
That is correct.
And then I guess this hundred and forty-nine thousand, that's what we've added back?
Mm-hmm, those are the budget amendments that were made this year, yes, sir.
Well, that's the budget amendments that were made during this current year, right?
That is correct.
Okay, now, how, how do they play in next year's budget?
Well, you've already reduced your contingency by that amount. So if you look up at the top, your contingency for the audit report at the end of the fiscal year was three million eight hundred and seventeen thousand ten dollars. Your estimated revenue collection for this current year is fourteen seven fifty-two two fifty-four, and total available revenue is eighteen million five sixty-nine two sixty-four. Then we subtract the estimated expenditures at fourteen million nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety-five, and then those budget amendments. And then those budget amendments that were made this current fiscal year of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars. And that gives you an estimate ending contingency for this, this current year of three million two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. To balance this budget for two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year is two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. And so that, you subtract that from your estimating ending contingency fund. And it gives you an estimated beginning of three million sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, so these are for information to show what happened to the contingency from the end of last year to this year.
That is correct.
They're not reoccurring in this budget here.
That's correct.
But if we go back, what I was asking earlier, for, so probably for five years, our expenditures have ran more than our revenues.
I would have to research that because I haven't been here that long.
I can tell you they have. For the simple reason that our contingency was up over five million. And our initial goal was to have a contingency that would meet three months of, of, uh, county expenses, October, November, and December. And the court said, rather than raise taxes, we will give back to the taxpayer. Our excess contingency.
I agree with that.
And because during that time, this country was going through some severe economic situations. And it was the consensus of the court that we not hit them with tax increases. When they were going through difficult times, when we had excess contingency or excess funds in our contingency fund.
Well, today, to fund a twenty million dollar budget for three months would take four point eight million.
That's assuming that you had to totally meet it, but we do have taxes that start coming in. Some people pay their taxes in October. And then some pay them in November and December. And, uh, it generally has taken about a million dollars a month. We have not come close in any year. As we've been drawing this contingency down to having to borrow money, as I remember. But if, if you continue to draw it down, at some point you would.
Angela, there you go. Very first figure, the audit report beginning contingency fund, three point, or three million eight hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yes, sir.
Does that take in, where does the three hundred and ninety-one thousand come in? Does that, is that, that was already taken out before this? Uh, that was accounted for in the audit report, I guess, and, and, and that's the amount that was used la- last year to balance the current.
I don't have my, um, audit report with me. But it's my understanding that's the available, the unassigned contingency fund for the audit report. There is an, an amount that's a prepaid item in your audit report that is assigned, and you cannot use that.
Judge, that's gonna be pretty close because if you take the, uh, three ninety-one that you just mentioned, and you take the one forty-nine here and add them together. That's five fifty, and then we take them from the starting contingency up here, that says two sixty-seven, and she's got two seventy-five, so you're, you're in the ballpark.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions or discussion? Does anybody have any further recommendations on how to make up the two hundred and eight thousand dollars without taking it out of contingency?
I speak for myself. I think my office and looking at Charles' budgets, everybody, we're all cut to the bone. And I think everybody in this courtroom has done a great job of putting money back into the budget. Uh, you just, we just can't keep pulling money that we don't have out. Uh, it's gonna get to the point where we're not gonna be able to operate. That's just my opinion. I may be wrong, but that's my opinion.
I don't know where we could get to oh eight, because I think even yesterday. We've made concessions in commissioners' budgets that we, we really didn't afford to make. We gave up money that we need in order to try to help out.
A- and I can agree with what's being said. I would, this is a proposed budget that will be filed. It will not be finalized until late August. I would ask this court to, we file it. Uh, this shows bringing the contingency fund down to three million sixty-seven thousand. I would ask the court that to give the employees at least a one percent raise, which costs about a hundred thousand dollars at this court. Try to come up with another thirty-three thousand dollars worth of cuts in the next two or three weeks so that we could. Give a one percent raise at least and not draw the contingency fund less than, uh, three million dollars. I just believe in a twenty million dollar budget, you can find thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars somewhere.
What was the thirty-three thousand for?
We withdraw the contingency fund. It shows it now at three million sixty-seven thousand, six forty-one. That we, we would use that sixty-seven thousand, six forty-one, plus an additional thirty-three thousand, or it'd be thirty-two thousand. Three hundred and fifty-nine dollars that we would find that ma- amount of cuts. So that we could use that sixty-seven thousand and thirty-two thousand cuts to give the employees a one percent raise. And we've got two or three weeks to, uh, come up with it.
My concern for everybody who's sitting in is that we keep taking money out of the contingency. What I understand, if a hurricane, you have a, a category three or bigger, blow through this county. You're gonna have within two months, a million and a half dollars go out to pay local contractors. So you go fifty percent of your contingency. We all hope a hurricane don't come. If it does, you're a million and a half. So if we run it down to three even, you have a worst-case scenario, you have one storm, not even two. Now you're down to a million and a half. And then you have two or three other catastrophic events take place. You know, what if you had, I mean, there's a lot of what-if games you play. What if you had an emergency management situation with Southampton? Or something else, and you gotta have first responders paid around the clock? And you gotta draw down off of that. You have a hospital that you're gonna eventually have to do something with. You gotta build an annex. We gotta put some more money on the retirement. And we gotta continue to grow as a county, continue to recruit and retain trained employees. And it, for me, it's not even a matter of a raise or not, it's a matter of at what point do you stop spending more than you take in? And I understand the formula's changed and we lost all that money, but in my simple way of thinking. If my finances change in my home, then my spending habits have to change. And me and the wife could debate over whether it's J C Penney's or going out to eat. Or eating hamburger meat versus chicken. And so what this court's tasked with, you know, I, I, I wanna make sure that the employees understand, for me, it's not about the raise. For me, it's about stop dipping into the contingency because we don't know. I know the commissioners have given up a lot in my budget along, over two hundred thousand dollars. In these five years. That's out of my budget. We're in a position now with the cuts we've taken. Like the sheriff said last year, if he can't respond to a call. And we're to a point now where there's a lot of stuff, really in the precinct, we really don't have the money now to take care of. And to me, it doesn't make sense if you keep cutting yourself to the point you can't afford. It's like this, if my wife said, Chris, I wanna, I wanna save X amount of money per month. And I could do that, but I couldn't pay my life bill. What benefit would that be to save that money and not be able to pay my life bill? And so for me, it's at a point to, it's easy, you know, I heard, I heard, I heard a statement this morning that the employees are blaming me. For the, not getting a pay raise, and statement was made, I bought two motor graders, and that's the reason they can't get a raise. Well, that's untrue. That was in my budget. I didn't take anything out of this budget to do what I had to do last year, but not only that, I got two motor graders for the price of one. Because of the trade-in value. And so if members of the court or people try to spend this to create division, that's not really fair. Because at the end of the day, these people behind this desk have to balance this budget. And we have to stop going, I, I've heard every year for five years, it will be better. And now we know that oil and gas has dropped for the long term, for the foreseeable future. So it's gone. So this year, there's a, a two hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit. We thought in the beginning it was gonna be six hundred thousand. And so what if next year is six hundred thousand? Well, you counted that by making good decisions this year, and it don't have to be raises to give up. But the only, there's only one other big department that you can cut two hundred thousand dollars out of, or three hundred thousand dollars out of. That's it, and that's the sheriff's office. Th- that kind of money doesn't exist anywhere else. I personally don't see what sheriff can cut. And why in the world would I wanna frustrate him that he can't take care of his job the way that I'm frustrated that I can't take care of my job? It's one thing to have a responsible government to where you can respond to the needs of the people. And it's a one thing just to keep cutting and keep cutting and keep cutting. Because I don't know that this court will even have the opportunity in another four years. To get this county not only where it needs to be financially, but where the purchasing power of the commissioners will return. I, I, I think, I think all the commissioners were in unity, and the judges in unity whenever we said, we think every employee deserves a raise. That's, that's how I truly feel. If, if, if the employees wanna take two hundred thousand deficit, add two hundred thousand to it, and let's take four hundred thousand out of contingency. Go for it. Personally, with my integrity, I can't do it. I can't look my neighbor in the eye and say, I, we took four hundred thousand dollars this year, again, we took three ninety-one last year, we take four hundred this year. To keep balance in the budget. Because I know what my neighbors is gonna say, Chris, you can't spend more than you take in. And that's just where I'm at. Am I for a raise? Absolutely. How are we gonna pay for it? If it takes, if the court wants three months of contingency, it takes four point eight million, that means we're one point eight million dollars short. Already.
If, uh, we're in hurricane season right now, if we got hit tomorrow. Debbie, what'd you give us a report on the other day, how much money we had on hand? If more than three million dollars, uh, we could operate on that for quite a while. And then you're gonna get reimbursed by the feds. What, what happened to the reimbursement whenever we had to, uh, operate for three months? Does that money go back in our contingency? We can harp on this contingency.
Right.
Well, as far as reimbursement from the feds, we're still working on that ten years later, uh, thirteen years later.
But if the money.
Still have, I think, it's three hundred and seven thousand.
Reimbursed, and you're gonna put it right back in there, so.
But the, the, and the percentages is gonna weigh down. What are they doing now, Teresa, on, on some of it? Can you just give us an example? Where it was before a hundred percent.
Yes.
Now it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Well, it's, 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 it's never been a hundred percent guaranteed.
Right.
It's always been seventy-five, seventy-five, under the law that set the contingency, set the hurricane or disaster relief fund up.
Correct. If it was an emergency procedure.
It just happened that when Katrina hit New Orleans. Because of the special situation down there, the government came in and did a hundred percent. Well, then right after that, Rita hit Texas. And so they had to treat Texas like they did New Orleans. And so it was a hundred percent. And then when Ike hit. Probably because you had a Republican president from Texas. Well, they came in and did a hundred percent. But the law's always been seventy-five, twenty-five.
Correct.
And as I understand, it's been, the word has come out that it will be seventy-five, twenty-five. Especially if you're in Texas, I don't think you will look at being anything above seventy-five. But. Looking at hurricanes, one could happen tomorrow, we'd have five this year.
Now, that's two of y'all saying that, y'all.
But, we went, I don't know how many years here in Hardin County. Sixty-five years of my lifetime, I never saw a tree blown over in Hardin County by a hurricane. Then all of a sudden, we had two. Now, what's the odds you'll have another? Who knows? But I don't think you can base your future on that you're, you could have any type of calamity. That we may have to address. But those are ifs. Those are mathematical possibilities. But dealing with this budget on a year-in, year-out basis, that's a reality. It's gonna happen every year.
And so far, since I've been on the court. It's the same every year. I mean, we argue about where we're gonna make the cuts, and then we end up taking out a contingency, and the next year. We'll give a three percent raise and everything's good. Chris says, that's what everybody says, it's, it's gonna get, I don't know that it's gonna get better, but we ain't in a bind, so I say, let's keep going.
Well, I, I think this court has made some cuts. I think this court has been very responsible with this budget. Things beyond our control, such as what the Comptroller's Office does, what the Federal Reserve did to us. And what oil price did to us this year are totally out of our control. The only thing we can do to react to it. And there's only actually two places to get money, one from the taxpayer and one from cutting expenses. Now, the contingency fund has given us the flexibility to finesse this. But long-term, like Chris is talking about, you're either gonna get it from public, or you're gonna make the cuts here. And what are you gonna do next year? If the trend holds, which the experts are saying it will, but you know, experts can be wrong. And we only, we only took a part of a year of oil and gas price cuts this year. What if you take a full year next year? Well, we've already got seven months behind us. So, okay, what if the budget situation's worse next year than it is right now?
Costs you a million dollars.
What are you gonna do?
Costs you a million dollars, and then you'll be down to two.
And then we don't have an annex building yet.
Right, and then you do it the next year, it might cost you a million and a half, and then you're down to five hundred thousand. You do it again, you're borrowing money.
What, what, what are you gonna do? You gonna raise taxes, or you gonna make cuts in county government?
And I, I, you know, and I think those are good discussions, but are, are, do you think that we can cut anymore out of our budgets?
I do.
I know you can.
Don't talk about that of commissioners?
I know you can because I spent thirty-five years in business. Where you had to face reality because you didn't have your taxpayers. And when the income didn't come in, you had to make the cuts. And they were painful cuts. We're fortunate that in county government, we do have taxpayers. But I think Devin will agree, you can cut this budget.
I'm gonna be popular.
Huh?
It ain't gonna be popular.
Well, it may not be popular, but it may be necessary.
And I've said it in the past, and, and I think everybody on this court pretty much agrees with this. Until we get a tax base like Jefferson County's got, we can't afford to do anything but raise the tax rate to get where we need to be. But me personally, before I can vote for a mo- now, yesterday I made a motion to put it to the effective rate. But before I can go above that, and I could go above that during this budget workshop, I'm gonna make sure that the cuts. That the cuts that I think need to be made are made, and that's not gonna happen, cause we can't agree on it, so I would never vote for another tax increase, I guess is what it boils down to. And, and I'm not blaming anybody for that. I just don't think we can compromise, uh, to where those cuts need to be made.
Well, you made two or three key points right there. One is you're never gonna have a tax base like Jefferson County for a simple reason that Jefferson County. If it's not already, it's becoming the petrochemical complex of the world. Right now, there's something like nineteen billion dollars worth of new construction on the books in Jefferson County. That is six or seven times what our total appraisal values are here in Hardin County. There is not gonna be a refinery come to Hardin County because the synergy is in Jefferson County. A refinery comes in there, they're gonna pay thirty-six cents in county taxes. But we're not Jefferson County. We'll never be Jefferson County. So we have to live with what we got. And I have no problem in this interim that we're gonna be in between the now and the time we set the budget. Of looking at our budget and making additional cuts if that's what we need to do this time next year when we sit here. Unless something drastic changes and we're already seven months into the year. They're talking about raising the discount rate, well, that won't help us much this year. Raising the discount rate will help us on revenue, but it's not gonna be a major source of revenue. There is not enough oil and gas drilling going on that's gonna change the oil and gas picture this year. There's no pipeline starting across this county. It's all of a sudden gonna give you, next year when we sit right here at this time. We will be far more under the gun than we are right now. And that is my concern is that, okay, next year you're gonna be more in the gun. You're gonna say, okay, employees, you're not gonna get anything again. That's the reason I would give at least a one percent raise. That's a token raise. That won't even match this insurance that these people are going to be paying. And I would go back in this next three weeks and I would look at where cuts can be made. And I agree with Chris a hundred percent. None of us on this court get enough money to operate. But when we sit here next year, you're not gonna raise taxes three cents, I do not believe. You will be making some severe cuts next year. Why not look at them this year?
And what are the proposed cuts?
Well, I can, I, I can make them in my department. I can't make them in anybody else's department.
You can't, you can't start, in my opinion, Mr. Kirk, now you can't start doing that because then you're gonna, I mean, we sat in here, made the headlines of the newspaper. What, how'd you put it, Dan? Squabbling? Squabbling. I could disagree on minute things and, and you said it the other day, just like, uh, Esther's, uh, car allowance, that's only twenty-four hundred dollars. That's, that's nothing compared to this. But I could sit in here and say. The jail has a budget to feed prisoners and you're, and you're feeding them out of, out of your supplies. I don't agree with that. You know, that's, that's minute. That's small.
Right.
But that's an example.
Right.
You know? And we could come up with thirty-three thousand, I believe, but I would want, if we voted for a raise this time. I would want it to be unanimous and I don't think that's gonna happen, so.
Well, I, I would like to see it unanimous, because I would like to go out in the paper that the court was unanimously behind these, uh. These, uh, employees and for thirty-three thousand dollars worth of cuts.
So who are we gonna fire to give others raises? Cause that's what it's gonna boil down to.
Thirty-three thousand dollars?
No, because you, because you painted a picture of death. I mean, what, next year may be more than that, so why not look at it this year? So why, why don't we go through some departments and just cut one person each department?
Well, you don't have to cut. We went through a far more severe budget crunch than this in nineteen ninety-seven. And we simply froze hiring. We froze hiring and we let attrition retirements and people quit it.
So are we there?
Glenda was here. She was here at this time.
So are we there on this budget?
Well, I'm there if, if, if the rest of the court's there.
Can I say something? I hadn't said nothing. Uh, going back on what you said earlier and. And it kind of like a history of, of, of the contingency fund and, and the way this, this county developed money and its resources. The gas and oil built the contingency fund and at the time, the commissioners lowered the tax rate from sixty-two cents, almost a dime. Well, uh. You can't hardly get that money back. We all know this. It's hard to raise it a penny. But the contingency fund, if I'm understanding Commissioner Pelt, who was the only one of us on that, at that time, was to supply that. Ways you built it back up and it, it was an encased one. It's like us having a savings account where we can, we can pay. If I have to go to the doctor and I have more expenses than I have in my checking account, I go to my savings account. That's what I understand. Okay. Now, I understand not wanting to take that contingency fund, but apparently back when we didn't have any at all. Uh, and it was de- designed and built as the rainy day fund of this county to protect us. Now, I don't, I don't disagree that we keep, I said it the other day, we're spiraling down. We, every year, I said it, we're going down every year. We got to quit going down. But it's not gonna be from budget cuts. We cut, cut, cut. It's still gonna go down because of the revenue coming in. We're not gonna get to that point. Unfortunately, unfortunately, had the, had the tax rate stayed up. You know, everything would be okay. It didn't. It went down and we've tried to make amends ever since as a county, as a citizen, as a taxpayer. Yeah, it might've been good. I don't remember, I don't remember the tax break, honestly. I mean, I, I paid my taxes like everybody else. Uh, if somebody told me I'd gotten a ten cent tax ra- tax decrease, I wouldn't have known. Uh, but we're already, we're already what? Two cents behind, basically? You know, if you, if, if you're, you know, i- if you're two cents behind this year, what are we gonna be next year? You got, you, we've got to start making that back up somehow. Is, oil and gas is not coming in. We're not gonna have no more, i- you, you can't count on that. You've got to count on the money to fund the county. And the first thing that says on all of our little deal, when we take the oath and all that, as, as a commissioner, we are obligated to fund the county. And by funding, I, I mean, I, that's through taxes. I said it the other day, I'll say it again. I'm, I'm, I despise having to pay taxes. I'm like everybody else. But as a county government, the people out here, the, the people who drive up and down our roads, they want the services of the county. Everybody in this county, whether they live in one of the cities or out in the county, uses this county. They come to Glenda's office, they come to the tax office, they still use the county. They may not be driving on roads that we work on or that we maintain, but they're still using the counties. That's why they pay taxes. They, the jail is there for them to, you know, get the bad guys off the road. But we have got to do something other than worrying about how much money in the contingency, because. I'm not, I'm, I, I don't even count that. But it's gonna continue to go down. We can, we can do whatever y'all wanna do as far as, as giving raises or whatever, but bottom line is, if we're not bringing in the money to pay our bills. It's not gonna do any good to sit here and try to cut, cut, cut. Cause how many years, you been on how many years?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen? The last five, how many years y'all cut? Every year? Every year. And, and you're still, and we're still not, you can cut, 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 and we're still not gonna make that total. Because we're not bringing that money in.
That's my argument. Then my other argument is, at what point in time is it not being fair to the citizen when you can't do the work?
Right.
It's one thing to look a man in the eye. And you, and you, and you, and you seriously can't. It's another thing that the decisions you made put you there. And I'm not gonna make the decision that I can't take care of the citizens. I appreciate too. I'm not gonna ma- three people can, but I'm not gonna make that decision.
And I don't disagree with that. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I think our, our infrastructure is one of the, and, and it's, it's very, very important. You know, like I said, we're, this isn't back several years ago, this is now. You know, there's a difference in the world, this is now. But we've got to be able to pull the money in. If, 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 if the contingency fund was there for the bad times, then this, it's, it's been bad times for a while. You know, but the contingency fund is still there and it's there to fund. So, uh, you know, a- as far as, a- as raises go. You know, I'm, I'm, I wanna see people be able to pay their bills that work for this county. I wanna see people be able to give their families insurance. It, it's not fair to our employees to hurt them. And, and I'm not firing back to Ken saying bouncing the budget on, on the backs of our employees. But I still don't think that if we have money, which we do in that contingency fund. That it, it should, it should go toward making this county work. And if, if it gets better, hey, we, you know, long term, long term projection on oil and gas is not gonna work. So if we end up raising the tax rate back up to where it was back when to make it work, and then if it all does, we go back down. But right now, you can't stay where you are because it's gonna continue to go up.
Well. It may someday go back to where it was years ago. That would depend on the economy, depend on oil and gas, things like this. One of the key things, and you mentioned it, was that last year. And this is hindsight and you can't go back and get the horse and put him back in the barn. Last year, we would've done, I believe, exactly what we did this time, had we known the effective tax rate last year was. And we would've picked up, we would've made this tax increase last year. And then probably where we are today, we would be making another one to the fifty-eight or something. But I don't really believe you can go back and make all that up at one time with the taxpayers.
I don't disagree with that either.
But I do think long-term, unless something happens, you're probably on a trend going back up.
I think people respect honest dialogue. And I think if you honestly, I think if you honestly tell people, you know, last year's rate. The numbers between the appraisal district and tax assessor were incorrect. And, and our, our rate was too low and we've gotta adjust it to now. I think people understand that. What I think people don't understand is when we keep BSing and keep making crazy decisions on, on, uh, how we're gonna fund the government. I mean, to me, as a person, it doesn't make any sense. To cut your foot off because you want a smaller shoe.
Chris, I don't believe this court's made any crazy decisions.
Well, I would disagree with you, Ken, because when we put ourselves in a position to where we can't buy equipment that we need. And we can't do the amount of mileage per road, you even said yourself, that the amount of mileage of road you're doing is double than what text doc says. Then I think we owe the citizens, the, if, if it's paid, repaving the road every twenty years, I think we owe the citizens. To get to the place where we're repaving the roads every twenty years. Some of the decisions probably wouldn't, wouldn't have been made.
You will never do that on the backs of these taxpayers, I'm telling you that.
Well, I understand that.
They'll change this whole court out.
Well, they already did. That's what you said. They already did.
They did because the tax rate was high, sixty-two cents.
Well, there was also some other things.
There were some other things, but they changed it out quickly.
Right. And I think if we keep going backwards, I think they'll change this court out.
I don't think they'll change it out for keeping the tax rate reasonable. I think they expect us to look at this, make, make sound decisions. We've got a three million dollar contingency fund. That contingency fund is not a sacra, something to be looked at as sacra.
Spend it all. That way we don't have a debate.
Well, I, I don't know of anyone that's advocating spending it all. I think we've been very judicious in taking out the contingency fund. To hold the taxes down as low as practical, because you've got people out there that are working part-time, people that are working two jobs. And this court has made decisions that reflected the economy that we're in.
Now think about what you're saying, two people working two jobs. And think about what we're saying of what, of what might have to happen this year. And we're not asking anybody to do anything else of what you just described. I've got a friend, hadn't had a pay raises in IT, hadn't had a pay raise in fourteen years. Talked to him last night, fourteen years, no pay raise.
I've got friends that are working jobs now, that they were working professional jobs and now they're working at laboring type jobs and on half the salary that they were ten years ago.
So let's think about what we're saying.
And I think those people expect us to make good decisions up here. And I don't think that it bothers them if we take two hundred and fifty out of that contingency fund. As Alvin said, the contingency fund was put here for us to use. Right now, we're, we're not in a natural disaster. Or natural emergency, but we're in an economic emergency caused by factors outside our control. Based upon the price of oil and gas. And it was cut in half this year. No one even dreamed, even the experts never dreamed. That oil would fall from ninety-five dollars a barrel to what was it, two or three days ago, forty-eight dollars a barrel? It was something certainly not under our control, but we're just fortunate that we've got a contingency fund sitting here that allows us. To keep this county operating as near normal as possible and yet not soak the taxpayer with a great tax increase. It's just as wise to use a contingency fund to level out our finances as it is to use a contingency fund for a natural hurricane it comes through.
Well, irregardless of the raise, we're gonna have to do that. And no, no, no member of the court is saying no to that.
Well, I'm just saying that the employees are the greatest asset this county has.
Absolutely agree.
And that to take another sixty-seven thousand out of that contingency fund. And to make thirty-two thousand dollars worth of cuts or take the hundred thousand dollars out of the contingency fund and don't worry about any more cuts. To me is good county government, good decision-making. That doesn't give your employees what they really need and what the other government entities in this county and other counties are giving. To keep these people from going backwards on their salary. And I'll never change my mind on that because I think they deserve it. And I don't think that the contingency fund is a holy grail or something that can't be touched.
The debate on how to balance the budget does not mean, for the record, the hundredth time. That I don't think the, the, the employees, don't paint out that some members of this court don't think they need a raise. Please.
Well, I think we all think they need a raise. It's just how do we get there?
Right. That's the debate.
The art, the debate is how do we get there?
That's the debate.
And, uh. You know, we've got different ideas on that and I respect the different ideas. But I believe there is a way that we can do it. And it's not going to torpedo the contingency fund. But it would tell these employees, look. We would like to do more, but we're gonna do something. That's my only thoughts on it.
Well, I've been quiet for a while and I've been just letting everybody talk and we were being productive for a moment, but, uh, then we got to a point where we're really not. Until I can talk about giving a raise, we gotta get this, get rid of this two hundred and eight thousand, three forty-one somehow.
That's, that's my, I'm not, that's just where I'm at in my mind. I can't see going and spending any more money in the budget on anything. Uh, raises or anything else without getting rid, getting rid of that.
Well, we definitely don't wanna take it out of contingency. So let's start. Let's cut. Y'all don't wanna mess with contingency. Let's don't do it to do that.
Let's don't what?
Let's don't use contingency to balance our budget.
Well, Judge, would you wanna go ahead and file this proposed budget as is and then continue to have some budget workshops and, and work on it?
It has to be filed by tomorrow.
It might be more.
No, I'm, I'm saying, go ahead and file this proposed budget.
Yeah, it has to be filed by tomorrow, the proposed budget.
Yeah, well, file it, just like it is today.
We don't have to come up with how we're gonna make the cuts, do we?
No, not today. But go ahead and file this proposed budget. It's a proposed budget.
That is correct.
It's not finalized until we have the public budget hearing. Go ahead and file it. And then come back and continue to work on cuts. Work on this budget. Until time for the budget and come up with cuts or whatever we wanna do, whatever their people's ideas are. I'm willing to come back for another meeting or meetings. And I'm willing to look at my budget. That's all I got to say, Judge. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything further?
Did you have any recommendations?
Uh, no, I maybe don't.
You were supposed to say something, we jumped in.
No, I was just gonna say that, uh. I definitely think that all the employees deserve a raise. I just think that we got to get to, we gotta at least get to zero before we can start talking about that.
Well, I think I respect every member on this court's opinion and I think we're not gonna agree on too much, but I can say this. Every Hardin County employee needs to come shake Mr. Pelt's hand, cause he is for our county employees and I appreciate that.
Judge, I, I would make this motion. We could file this budget as a proposed budget and continue to work on it.
Second.
Um, yes, I.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall that we filed a proposed budget submitted today. And that amount is, uh. The total budget being twenty million, fifty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars. the total budget being twenty million, fifty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars. Any discussion?
I, I can, we can vote on this, and I just wanna say one more thing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That is, with the understanding that we're gonna continue to have some, have to have some more meetings and figure out where to come up with this deficit.
And I would like to say this, Judge, I appreciate your patience and leadership at this court, appreciate all the members of the court, uh, I hope Daniel doesn't say we had boxing gloves on today, because we didn't, but, uh, uh, this is a very open and honest court, trying to do what's best for the taxpayers, and appreciate everybody's thoughts on it.
And Angela, for your dedication on it.
Yeah.
Your office.
Thank you.
It's been difficult, but we're gonna get there.
And today, I'm gonna stick around, if anybody here has any questions, you know? I, I understand the rumor is, I'm, I'm, I'm the, uh, the big bad wolf here, and so, uh, feel free to talk to him, cause, uh, I'd love to hear your thoughts, and my number's two four six, three nine seven two. And I'm available at any time, that any employee wants to talk to me about the budget. And, um, I'll shut my door, and I'll pull out everything I've got, and I'll show you exactly what I've got, and I'll listen to your thoughts, and I'll entertain them. And, uh, what I mean by entertain them is I'll take them serious. So, uh, I'm gonna hang around, if anybody has any questions, feel free to talk to me.
And before we adjourn, I'd like to just open the floor to anybody that's in the audience that has anything that they'd like to say. Any questions you'd like to ask, anything you'd like to, recommendations you'd like to offer? Uh, anything that you have to, have to say, uh, Joseph had a great idea the other day, and, uh, we're actually checking into that, Debbie is with TAC, we haven't gotten an answer from him yet, but, uh, anybody that wasn't here Monday, Joseph recommended that we look at a, uh, i- if we do a salary increase to try to, uh, set a, uh, certain percentage for those who make under a certain amount. For instance, somebody that makes under fifty thousand might get a two percent raise, and those that make over fifty thousand might get something less than that. Uh, I actually checked into that before I became the judge, and was told it was illegal, so I didn't check into it after I became the judge, but when you brought it up, Debbie's, uh, checked with TAC, and we are waiting on an answer on that. I think it's a great idea.
We've done in the past, a, uh, across-the-board fifty-dollar raise or whatever, I don't know how much that would cost the county, but.
Fifty times two eighty-nine, so.
Well, I wouldn't say give, uh, part-time people anything.
Well, that's just it, we gotta make sure we can give something to some, and not to, and, and not to others. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? I'll get, I'll get with you in just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your patience with us, did somebody?
I was gonna say, if you are gonna, if you are gonna raise the full-time employees amount, I mean, it's gonna raise anyway the amount they're paying for insurance, if you can do it across the board, dollar amount, just to offset that, I think, I think that would help them out. If it's going up forty dollars, if you just give them an extra forty dollars across the board.
I don't think you'll find one member of this court that disagrees with you, it's just to try to figure out where to, where to find the money to pay. But I don't think any of the five of us disagree with what you're saying.
If that is, it's not everybody has the family insurance, and you would just be giving people that have family insurance that, that raise. There's not very many people in the county, am I right, that we, that have that family insurance, most people are just employee only.
Well, there again, if we can give, uh, certain raises to certain people, and, and be, uh, differential on that, maybe that's something else we could look at, everybody that has family gets a certain amount, everybody that has employee spouse gets a certain amount, and really, all it does is just cover that extra expense. There again, we gotta come up with the money to pay for it, and I don't know that that, I really don't know if that would be legal to do that or not.
I know in general, they've had caps before, where they got to learn it, so that's why I'm questioning whether it's-
I talked to Monica the other day, and she said they still have a cap, but, but those are set by the state. And, uh, I would think we could do the same thing.
You could probably do like exempt and non-exempt, that's probably how you'd have to do it.
No, they have a cap, uh, you know, we're-
Like, once an employee gets to, say, sixteen dollars an hour, they, if, even if there's a three percent raise given, they don't get it.
There's been one person that's been there a long time, of probably eight or nine years, that has capped it up.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say, or any questions you'd like to ask of us? Mr. Roberts, you had something else you wanted to say?
Changed my mind.
I don't have anything, Judge, I've said too much already.
Anything else? Mr. Kirkendall? Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move through adjourn.
I can say anything. I understand the adjourn.
Alvin, take care, when you find out, I'm pretty good with how it works.
I will, Ben.
Angela, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The reason it increases is because all the-
I don't know when. It just kept getting worse and worse.